We'll call to order the January 9, 2020, meeting of the Clive City Council. The clerk please call a roll.
Mayor Sercina?
Here.
Council members Klein?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Judkins?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
All present and accounted for. Nice to have everybody here this evening. Happy New Year as we get ready to drop our temperatures significantly. But that's tomorrow. It's always great weather on a council meeting day, so welcome. Glad to have you with us. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. We have a change in the agenda because of the recent developments with the Deerfield Point proposal. Prior to approving this agenda, we're going to need to amend it. So I would accept a motion to amend action item number one. It'd be a motion to receive and file the developer's correspondence of rezoning application withdrawal.
So moved.
Second. That's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero as amended.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay, the next item is citizens' presentation. This is where anyone in the council chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here to do so? Seeing none, we're going to go to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussions? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, the next item we have is the oath of office, the ceremonial oath of office for three new elected council members. They're not new, however. Councilmember Judkins, Mayor Protown, and longtime councilmember John Edwards, next to me here, and councilmember Ted Weaver. So I think we're going to come down front and we'll administer the oath of office. And maybe take a picture or two.
I need a script. Weaver, you want me to read that to you?
I'm going to have you all kind of angle this way and I'll kind of stand over here. That way everybody sees your slide. I want to congratulate all of you on your hard fought actions. Welcome back. Your past services are appreciated, so I'm excited to administer this oath to you. Jump right in. So you ready to take the oath, councilmembers? Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, John Edwards.
Ted Weaver.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially?
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my ability?
Do the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties?
Discharge all the duties.
Office of city council member in the city of Clive?
Yeah, office of city council member in the city of Clive.
Is now or hereafter required by law?
Is now or hereafter required by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, councilmember.
Let's get all of you together. Good? Grab the papers. One, two, three. Councilmember Weaver, it's like they just did it. Sorry. Does the boss want it?
Let's give this team a round of applause.
Councilman Weaver, did the boss want a picture?
I don't know. Oh, we should, we'll share it.
I thought we already did.
Well, again, congratulations and looking forward again to some great things. Just quickly, this council's been a great team to plan with and to work with. We've been blessed here. And so this moving forward is another counting of our blessings to get things done and to get to work. So great to get started again in this new year. Now, we're going to move to a presentation regarding some outgoing board member recognition from the Leisure Services Department. Todd?
Good evening, your honor. If you would be so kind to come down and help me. I need some assistance, but as you all know, Leader Services is made up of a few boards. We have the Park Board, Library Board, and the Public Art Commission. And this is the time of year when new members come on the boards and old members roll off, and we want to recognize those folks rolling off for their service to our community. They volunteer their time and talents to help Clive, the great place it is, so we want to be sure and recognize that. So we're going to start with the Park Board, and we have two members coming off the Park Board. First one is Robin Pryor Ross, and she served for one term from 2017 to 2019. And our tradition in Parks and Rec is they get a piece of the green belt to take with them after their service. Robin? And then if you just stay up here, we're going to do a group picture then at the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have another Park Board member who has served two terms. Dick Wheeler will be coming off the board this month, too. Dick?
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Enjoyed it.
We had one member of the Library Board, James Becker, who had served one full term, and he had a conflict come up at the last minute and is not able to be with us tonight. So we will recognize him at the Library Board meeting on the 20th if he can be there. And then lastly, the Public Art Commission. We have a couple members coming off there. And the first one we're recognizing is Josh Drier, and he's served two terms from 2013 to 2019, and two of those years he served as Chair of the Public Art Commission. And for public art, we give them some of the Sticks art tiles of Clive as a memento. And then on all the awards, the inscription is "With sincere appreciation presented to that member in recognition for their service to the city of Clive." Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Josh. The last member coming off the Public Art Commission, and I was very sad he wasn't able to be with us here tonight, but he's somewhere between here and Pennsylvania on his way to see his grandkids, is Tom Murphy. Tom was on the Public Art Commission, and his service started in 2010, so almost 10 years. And as we all are well aware, he was an integral part of getting public art to the level it is in our community. So if you see him when he gets back, give him a pat on the back and thank him for his service. He was in my office a couple days ago, so he did get his award, but I wanted to make sure and mention his service while we're here tonight. So let's give all our off-going members some credit.
Just kind of squeeze in just a little bit for it. Three, one, two, three. Last one, one, two. Great. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
So Todd, thank you for that recognition. And to our off-going board members, can't express enough our appreciation for your time and dedication. You know, a lot of people just don't know and understand how critical our boards and commissions are in the city to making us who we are. A big part of the advice and consent that the council gets from all of you, so thank you again for all of your efforts. Okay, now we're going to move to action items. And the first item is a public hearing regarding Deerfield Point rezoning. This is a continuation from 12/12/2019, actually. And that's the consideration of proposed ordinance number 1085, Deerfield Point rezoning, C4 to PUD. And Amanda?
Mayor, council, good evening. As you guys have stated previously in the evening, the application has been withdrawn by the developer. We did have the public hearing open from the December 12 meeting, so we do need to take action to close that tonight. And then also, as you amended the agenda, to receive and file that letter of withdrawal from the applicant. Since we have been to, I think this would be the fifth public meeting that this project's discussed at, and we've gone through all the process with getting input from the neighbors in the different iterations, staff would like to get some direction from you guys for the kind of future land use of the area and generally what you prefer there, so we know kind of how to deal with future requests for development. So just from a little bit of background, the land is zoned C4 currently. There is an approved development plan for a mixed commercial setup that would have, you know, bank, restaurant, retail, those kinds of uses. The site has not been successful in attracting commercial development. The last development was the Arby's property. There is a mix of existing housing types in the area with single-family townhome and apartments all kind of within that quarter-mile region. And the land on the east side of Northwest 156 there is, as the future land use shows it, is commercial and multifamily. So staff interpreted the request to be kind of in keeping with the neighborhood and the future land use intent of that area. From a fiscal analysis standpoint, depending on the specific apartment project, it could perform better than a commercial property. The one that was proposed with the 235 units, we did do some analysis on that and find that the funds to the city on an annual basis would have been higher than the property tax and lost sales tax generated from a prospective commercial development. We, as I said, did get a lot of public feedback on this project. A lot of the concerns focused around the building height, privacy issues, density, stormwater, traffic, bike and pedestrian conflicts, noise, and property value impacts. So we wanted to take just a couple minutes to kind of walk through some of those and some of the information that staff was able to gather about those items. So for traffic, the would-have-been developer had engaged Mark Parrecton, who's a traffic engineer, to do analysis on that. And he had been active on the Hickman corridor studies, so he's well aware of the traffic in that area. And that memo found that this proposed project, so a similar project with around the same number of units, would hold true as well. It would contribute to a decrease or negligible change in the potential future traffic demand at the intersection as compared to the currently approved commercial development plan. The next kind of big topic area was stormwater. So with any development on this site, all of the standards in our post-construction stormwater management manual will be triggered. Their engineers for the project that has been withdrawn also did some analysis and went on-site and found that the waters flow away from the townhome properties to the north and the west. There's existing burms, and that's kind of generally the breakpoint. So the water would flow in, and any additional water would be required to be handled on-site so that it would be the same runoff as the predeveloped condition. Privacy was discussed. We don't have a specific project to really get into that issue anymore. So if you would like to talk about that more, I can certainly give some information, but I'll kind of skip over that one for now. Impact to property values was brought up quite a few times. Staff did some research on that and found that there's no evidence to support a negative impact to property values from adjacent multifamily projects. There are a couple national studies that were referenced in an earlier staff report that speak to that in more detail. And we also did some analysis on local property values surrounding the Stonegate Apartments, which are about a quarter-mile up the street from this development, and found that there's been no statistically significant difference in the values per square foot of the property or building or the appreciation of those properties. Another concern was overburdening the elementary school, Schuler Elementary. Staff had reached out to Kirk Johnson, the COO of Waki School Districts, and he was able to provide us with some information from the school's demographer that they keep on, that they work with, to help them plan since it is a growing district. They redraw the boundaries at this point about every three years. And Mr. Johnson had indicated that this project would not trigger them redrawing the boundaries. Multifamily projects on average generate about .08 students per unit. So in this case, with the 235 units, it'd be approximately 19 students in that K-35 age range. Could be expected on average. A single-family development, just as a comparison, is .34 students per unit, so it's quite a bit lower. And he had said that any concerns with it overburdening the school at this point were unsubstantiated after he looked over the plans and kind of saw what was being proposed. The final one that I'll kind of address tonight for the comment was overtaxing fire and police services. We were not able to pull our last year's worth of data. As you know, we've had some security issues in the metro, so WestCom's information was down. But we did have information we had previously polled from January 1, 2017, through November 9 of 2018. So we analyzed that and found that overall calls, the commercial development on the south side of Hickman during that time, had 221 calls. Stonegate Apartments, which is comparable, they have 198 units. They generated 88 calls or .44 per dwelling. The townhome associations, the three in that area around the proposed site, had 124 calls, which was equal to 1.41 calls per dwelling. And the single-family generated 132 calls, which was equal to 0.57 per dwelling. So the apartments actually generated the lowest number of calls of any of the land use types in that area, based on the number of dwellings that were there, and actually the lowest number of calls overall as well. Those do not include motor vehicle collisions. Since those aren't attributable to an individual property, those were excluded from the analysis, which had the biggest impact on the commercial lots. Didn't really impact the residential uses. So with that overload of information, if you guys have any questions or if you want to take any comments?
Amanda, so at this point, staff, with the withdrawal of the plan, staff is not recommending the proposal at this point in time. But that's really part of the reason why, of the withdrawal, based on, you know, their request for a PUD designation, et cetera. But really, I think what we'd like to see, based on our previous discussions and a whole lot of interaction, I think, with our residents, is to go back, if they choose to continue, go back and work with our neighborhoods to come up with the best project that works for everybody involved. I think to our residents, you know, our jobs are to seriously consider and work with you all, the developers in these situations, really and try to look at every aspect of what could occur here and do the best job for you and for us and make the best decision. We're still in a public hearing situation, so I'm going to, before I continue, I'm just going to do a housecleaning item, and that's, Matthew, could you just reiterate when public notice was posted on this?
It was published in the Des Moines Register on November 25, 2019.
So we are still in an active public hearing. You know, I think to our residents, we want to continue with our staff to work with the developer and with you to figure out the best path forward. But right now, this has been withdrawn because staff doesn't feel, and, you know, and the council hasn't ruled on it, but I think staff doesn't feel that this is the direction based on the proposal as it's been brought forward to now. Matt, do you have any comment that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think what was unique with this case, your honor, is with the PUD designation request, which is the city's most flexible zoning designation. And whenever a PUD is being requested, the details of development plans really have to be flushed out. And as a part of this particular project, staff wasn't comfortable that we were getting to a point where we could recommend a PUD designation. Doesn't mean that a future application couldn't come back that is still multifamily in nature. It could be under a PUD, it could be under an R3 zoning designation. I know we talked a little bit about the difference between R3 and PUD at the very first, when we were setting the public hearing back in November for this previous application now that is being rescinded. And so I think from the staff's perspective, you know, this concept of multifamily is different than the existing uses, as Amanda has alluded to. And so our hope is to get, you know, some indication, at least in terms of questions or concerns that this council may have, is if we get additional multifamily applications, whether it's from the current developer or the developer that we had been working with on this project or a different developer at some point that approaches the current property owner, is just what are some certain things or direction that this council wants to provide the staff in terms of things that, questions that we need to be asking, things that we need to be looking for. I know we outlined a number of questions. The council outlined a number of questions to the developer early on because of the PUD nature of the request, and we've memorialized those, we have those, we share those with that developer. We would share it with any future developer, depending on a plan that would come forward. And so this was really, we thought, since we had a public hearing, that it was being continued, that this would be an opportunity to have some of that dialogue. And also, you know, we haven't had the discussion yet in this chamber with the neighborhood, and so we felt that it was appropriate, from a staff perspective, to make sure we're at least putting some information out there on some of the concerns that had been raised and at least make sure we take this opportunity to have that dialogue if the council wishes to do so as we move forward, whether it's, again, another application from this current developer or a future application from a different one, whether it's multifamily use or the commercial use, which of course wouldn't require a rezoning, but still would be a site plan, and questions of privacy and things would probably still come up even in that discussion as well, so.
Matt, thank you, I think, for that context, and we certainly can have discussion. I'm going to back up for the edification of our residents and just back up to about 2003, 2004, when we were having very active conversations at that time with the residents of your neighborhood and with the property owner at that point in time about big box or large retail coming in. There was a strong desire, obviously, on the part of the neighborhood, not to have that come. We had a lot of meetings about that. And I think, depending on what your opinion is, good or bad, that never occurred. But I would humbly say this. Had it occurred and had that developer met all of the requirements of the use, the council is very, very limited in terms of what it can do at that point in time. They have to pass that project. Where they have a lever is when the site plan comes, and then they could really move to work to make that the best site plan they can make it, because that's the way we do things here. No matter what it is, we're going to make it the best that we can make it because we want to do it the Clive way. So we don't have a lever there. In this situation, when a multifamily scenario has been presented to us, we have a lever to work with because there's another request being made, a rezoning request that's being made. This is a real critical aspect of this. So we have the opportunity to really weigh in on, hey, is this the best use? Staff's telling us that really, when we look at the whole thing, this is the best use for our neighborhoods. If we're living next to it, this is probably the best use. But we still got to vet that all the way. But we have a lever there to really work with and really drive to make it the best, the best project that we can make. If a commercial project comes, we can't pick what kind of commercial project it is. If it meets or exceeds the requirements of the use, we have to pass it or we can be challenged in court. So I want to, I want to, I'm going to stop there, and then I'm going to invite our council to make some comments, and I'd like to hear from a couple representatives of the neighborhood. And again, remember, the proposal's off the table now. The opportunity is here for us collectively to go back and work with the developer if they choose to continue. My sense is that they will, because this is a good place. But to go back and really, really work this through and continue to work on those items that make everybody comfortable, and that's the way we would prefer to do it. So I'll stop there. Ted, do you have something?
Yeah, so obviously, this specific project has been pulled, but as the mayor just said, staff has been recommending to us that this is the highest and best use. So whether it's Matt or Doug or Amanda, if I could get, and for the residents, a better understanding and description of why this is the highest and best use of that land, give us some context around that, why you believe as professional developers that this is the highest and best use.
Absolutely. So it's kind of basic land use theory that you separate uses based on intensity. Commercial would be a higher intensity than residential. So we have a single... The impact, so when you have commercial, you have a lot of trash. You have delivery trucks, depending on the use, at all hours of the night, you know, three, four in the morning, sometimes coming if it's a big-box store especially. Later hours and, you know, what you have people typically coming home from work or visiting friends. Where, like Walgreens, a lot of those, you know, are 24 hours. Ours is not in that location, but you can have those kinds of uses that have a much bigger impact on kind of the day-to-day feel of the neighborhood. Also, the kind of architectural clash with your typical single-family pitched roof, anything like that. It just doesn't typically blend very well once you start talking about these shopping center kind of districts. You have, you know, all the other privacy concerns, headlight concerns, noise from the traffic, a lot of reasons there. So the way this area is laid out right now, to the north, there is a single family. And then just south of that, there are townhomes that are kind of duplex style, one shared wall, but owner occupied for the most part, townhome. And then south of that, it went immediately to commercial, which is the landing question for the zoning. So it would be very typical to see a higher-density residential use to buffer than the highway, Hickman, which is Highway 6, from the just north townhomes. You would typically get a residential use if you could rather than a commercial use because that impact on the neighbors would be less.
Does the economic climate bear into that at all as well?
Certainly does. So there hasn't really been a lot of interest in developing the site, so that does certainly come into play. You know, we can't have land sit vacant forever. It does have public services going to it. There are roads there, there's water there, there's sewer there. Those are all costs the city is incurring for maintenance and upkeep that isn't generating basically any property value back in taxes because it's just the land that's being taxed, there's no improvement on it. So that is obviously a consideration that we look at is what is the land use that will best support the services that are already on the site from a financial standpoint as well.
And it is being taxed as agricultural, is that correct?
I would have to verify that on how it's currently being taxed, but that sounds correct.
Doug, is that right? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Eric?
So along with the history of this, Mayor, as we've looked at this, you know, it looked to putting a big-box store in there in the early 2000s, then economic climate, a lot of the economic development went out to Jordan Creek here. So we saw West Des Moines with a lot of the development going out there. So essentially, the land was stagnant, as it still is right now. You know, but we're also seeing a resurgence of Hickman Road. You're seeing new developments with Aldi's. You're seeing a new bank up there, a credit union. You're seeing an ash house of pancakes. So I'm not ready to abandon a commercial zoning right yet. I think we're seeing a resurgence of commercial business in that particular neighborhood. So there still might be an opportunity for another commercial development as well, along with multifamily, but I'm not ready to give up on that, and I think there still might be some opportunity for commercial development there.
Yeah?
Well, I find the staff's argument fairly persuasive, that it looks like the current zoning is probably not going to be supported economically by what's happening and that what they're suggesting as far as multifamily is probably... and that what they're suggesting as far as multifamily is probably going to approach to it.
Yeah, Susan?
One of the real questions I know among residents has been related to the traffic issues. And I'm just wondering, does staff find it credible that there would be a decrease in traffic for 235 units as compared to commercial? And what is that supposing? You know, what is the comparison in terms of what kind of commercial as compared to that 235? Because it doesn't seem likely to me that it's less, but maybe it's not that much more either. So I'd like to get a sense from you on what your thoughts are about that.
Absolutely. So with the project that had been proposed, over half the units were one-bedroom units. So there's not going to be a lot of multiple, multiple roommates living there. You're not getting three or four people in most of these units. And, you know, you'd have one to two in the majority of them. So one thing is, not everyone goes to work at the same time. So a lot of what we heard was, you're going to have over 400 cars at once. When I leave for work in the morning, I don't see any of my other neighbors leave for work at the same time as me. I don't even leave for work at the same time as my husband, and we work the same hours. So there is that difference, you know, people have different hours, they come and go. But then you get businesses like Starbucks, McDonald's, a bank, they have peak hours that are going to be the same hours kind of across all the businesses. We all know if you drive by Starbucks before work, kind of 7:30 to 8:15, you know, a lot of them here in Clive, they're backed up to the street. We have the one over by Petco on Buffalo Road, frequently blocking, that's the one I stop at on the morning. And then we have also the one at the corner of Hickman and 111th, that also backs up quite a bit as well. So you're going to have those kinds of issues with a commercial development. Those are the things that are likely to go in that area. There's going to be stuff that's auto-oriented like that with drive-throughs, banks, things of that nature, just because it is a highway-adjacent development. And you're not going to get a little kind of downtown-looking thing where you park and walk and do a bunch of shops all at once. It's going to be more that big-box nature. So staff does think that the analysis is credible. They did bring on a traffic engineer to look at that specifically, and one that has a lot of experience working in the corridor and the surrounding communities. So we would have to defer to him on his expertise with that. And Mr. Perrington, I would completely agree with his analysis if that's likely to be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Just to follow up on that, I guess if this comes again, I'd like to see something quantifiable on that, right, of numbers. And I know we can't pick what, but anecdotally, we can say, my neighbors don't go at the same time. And I, I get it, but I'm with Susan a little bit on that one, that you also don't have people coming at midnight to those commercial places, or 2 o'clock, or the shift, 11 o'clock shift, you know, or the 3 o'clock shift. So there's, there's lots of variables in that. So again, if this comes forward, something more number-oriented. The other one is, how close did we get? I know we discussed some questions back, or asked some questions back to the developer, saying we'd like to see these items. I'm not sure where, how close we got to getting those items from them. You know, they pulling out because it's just a hassle, or they can't provide any of the solutions we asked for?
Sure. So I can't speak for them as to exactly why they pulled back. Staff did feel that we didn't really get the engagement from them that we were looking for on a lot of those questions. One of the big components of our PUD is incorporating public and private open spaces together. We didn't really see any significant changes on the site layout throughout the entire process. I think we ended up with a total of six site plan submittals, and they were basically the same submittel every time, added a couple sidewalks, things of that nature. We didn't really get a lot of engagement on those aspects that we asked for. We talked a lot about the fence, they didn't really embrace that early on with the residents asking for it. You know, they came later and did agree to do it ultimately, but they didn't really seem to be very proactive in trying to address a lot of those things. So that's why staff's recommendation was, we support the land use, but we're just not sure about this specific project and plan. We think it can be better, and there are opportunities that weren't really thought through.
Great. And thanks for staff for following up on that and enforcing those. I think that's, was the right message. If they're not willing to, to work with us on a fair, fairly simple things, it doesn't look to me like it's the residents out there's fault or our fault. They're just not willing to do some of the, kind of the right things to be a good neighbor. But so, I, I look forward to another plan, another investor, and there will be one. Speaking to the residents that, that I have out there, they aren't against multi, you know, the, the higher-density residential, they're not totally against it. It's just the right project needs to happen, and that's what Clive is asking for as well. So I'd be open to any of it back, but the PUD is a special thing to give out. And you're not just going to...
Well, I think that's the point right there.
Yeah.
It's, it's...
The R3, and I'm back to, sure, I look at that, and I would push back to the residents as saying, this is, R3 is the best thing if we can get all those pieces in.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the comments of the council, Ted.
One last comment, just from a direction standpoint. I, I just want to say, I, I agree with John, that I, I do think staff's arguments are compelling as far as the multifamily, so I am supportive of that. But I, I do fully understand where the residents are coming from. They have a lot of legitimate concerns, and I, you know, so we definitely want to incorporate those into any future project. Something like that barrier in between the projects is, is absolutely a legitimate request from them, in my opinion. You know, the stormwater management, all those kind of things are legitimate concerns, and I share Susan's, you know, skepticism on the, the traffic. It's just counterintuitive, right? It just, so that's where I do want, like Mark Perrington, to be here if we do this again, so that we can understand his methodology and, and how he's coming to those conclusions, because it, just on its surface, it doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, what they're saying is, you know, at peak hours, morning and afternoon, whether they leave at the exact same moment or not, you're adding a whole lot of traffic to that intersection. So it, it, it just does cause questions that I think in the future, if we were to move forward with something like this, we're going to need to get answers to, so.
I think that's part of a broader discussion as well. You know, if we're at 18,000 roughly in population today, well, our build-out population is going to be 25,000 or so, maybe a little less than that. And where is that going to be? It's going to be in this area and just to the north and east of it. So, so I think a lot to consider when it comes to that, and, you know, more discussion. I think, I think the point, if I could sum all of this up just to our residents, you know, I, I hope it's very evident to all of you that this council, and your mayor included, are, are taking this very, very seriously. We want to vet it all the way through with you. You know, we're, we're here for you. I think that you've heard commentary, really kind of from, from a broad perspective on this, whether it's commercial or multifamily. We have to consider all of it. And so, so I, I, I hope that you see that, I hope you have some comfort in that, and hope and understand that should, should this proposal continue, that we've, you know, set, set the basis with which we want to operate, and with expectations of what we want to achieve, I think, together. Really, really important. So I'm going to stop there, and then maybe ask one or two of you on behalf of the group, if you have comments that you'd like to make, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'd like to hear from you.
I'm Mary Langen. You've heard way too much from me in the last two months. I live at 16050 Sheridan Avenue in Clive, and I am the president of Country Club Point Townhome Association. We are very thankful that this proposal was withdrawn today. Looking forward, all of the residents that live along Sheridan Avenue and the adjoining neighborhood, we realize that development is going to happen on this plot of land between our homes and Hickman. There's nothing any of us want to do to stop it. However, we are asking the City of Clive to consider developing this land in a way that's in keeping with the aesthetic of our neighborhood and what the City of Clive is so wonderful, what keeps it so wonderful. And that's, that's really our summary statement. One thing to add to the city, Amanda, when, when we attend these meetings and statistics and numbers are thrown out, like traffic will decrease by 5,000 vehicles, that does not make any sense to us, and we are asking for sources. Like if you could source out in your presentation where all those demographics and those numbers are coming from, I think it would help us be able to investigate that on our own so we understand that, because there were so many numbers thrown out during all of these meetings, and we have no, as consumers, we have no way to go back and backtrack, and all we do is ask more questions, but we never get information where they come up with these numbers. So I thank everyone, and we are pleased with the outcome.
We thank you for your comments. Thanks, Mary. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? Loretta, if you would come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Loretta Seaman, and I live in this country club. What I want to say is thank you to the staff. I know this has not been easy. We had BJ at our home, we had the developers, we, we worked with the citizens. Their, their concerns were very normal. They weren't, they weren't our, what I would say to you in, in response, and I've said it to BJ this morning, and I've said it to the developers, that when questions were asked, they needed to understand that they weren't, it wasn't that they were against the project, they didn't understand the project. When they wanted a fence, they were going to put up three strips and then leave a tree, three strips and leave a tree. And for people that are in their final home and are proud to be here, and they are, these neighbors are very, very proud of where they live, and they take very good care of their stuff, that they didn't always get the answers that you would like them to have. And so, you know, and I'll use an example, when, and I've worked with all of those people, so I know them. I went to the corner of 156th and Sheridan, and I parked my car, and I waited. This morning, I waited six minutes. Now, there were cars behind me, and there was no way we could get out. So I'm not saying that they're not, that they, they may be right about this, but regardless of when you get out, somebody's going to go to work between 7:00 and 8:30, and there's going to be those extra cars trying to come out at that area, while we're trying to come out, and cars are coming up. So that will be a situation for your traffic people to deal with. And we're just asking, I know they say that it'll make a difference. I went up to 156th and University, and I, you know, it's not like I don't have anything to do, but I sat there and I counted the cars that went in and out of that complex, and never even got to 1,000. And that's pretty big where the restaurants are and the nail shops and the banks and stuff. I'm not saying that we, that, that it's right or wrong. The people were very, very professional, except for one meeting where they got very angry at the residents. But I want you to know that your staff was wonderful, and they worked with people, and they listened, and thank you for whatever happens. I know what Amanda put in there, having been there before. I just think it's not a bad project, it just wasn't put in the perspective it could be to be a good project for that area. Thank you.
Loretta, thank you. Okay. Thank you for your perspective, and council, thank you for your questions and for your perspective as well. Dismissed, and probably will continue. And so I think, you know, with this dialogue, the council has certainly set its expectations. I would say that we set those expectations a couple of months ago. So with that in mind, we will continue in partnership, look forward to that. Thank you for being here. At this point, I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there any other comment? Saying now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero to close the public hearing. I would take a motion at this point to receive and file the developer's correspondence of rezoning application withdrawal.
Still moving.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric, discussion. Saying now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, residents, for being here. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. We're going to get into the budget if you'd like. Okay, we'll move to action item number two. This is a public hearing as well regarding the First Amendment to the telecommunication facility lease, US Cellular 10365 University Avenue, and Matthew, was appropriate public notice posted.
Yes, Your Honor, it was published December 23rd, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Resolution A is approving the First Amendment to the Telecommunication Facility Lease Agreement, US COC of Greeter, Iowa, LLC, US Cellular. Who's got this one?
I got it. Thank you, Your Honor. As the council's aware, on our water tower, 130 University, we have a number of providers who provide cellular service on that tower, and they pay a lease payment to be on that tower, to have antennas on that facility. We have a lease agreement with US Cellular for six antennas on that tower currently. They have approached, they had approached us to replace three of the existing six, and then also adding three. So with the addition of three, the city requested as a part of the lease amendment to increase the rent at a prorate amount to compensate the city for those additional antennas. So what you have before you is a lease amendment to that original agreement, to be reviewed by legal counsel, and we would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Matt. Council, questions?
We're going to close the public hearing.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Saying now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Eric, further discussion. Saying now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, item number three, Shadow Creek North rezoning from R1 to PUD. Amanda?
I'm back.
Nice to see you again.
Do you have for the doc cam, if you guys don't mind turning that on for me? Okay. So we are getting ready to do Shadow Creek North, which is very exciting, with the construction of the West Gate Parkway Bridge to get across Little Walnut Creek, that'll open up this area for development, and we have developers who are ready to go. So similarly to how this was done in 2017 with the Shadow Creek South area, there are actually multiple rezoning applications that were submitted kind of under one concept plan. So tonight, we have two applications and consent petitions, and two resolutions to set public hearing. The concept plan is what I've brought tonight to kind of look at. This includes both of those rezonings at this point. It will be a phased development. There are 269 lots currently shown. That number might flex a little bit one way or the other as we work out some grading issues and things like that at the full development, but that's approximately what it'll be. So what is shown here is all single-family residential, and then they also have this area right here that they are hoping to get a kind of general concept figured out for, right now, they just have it designated mixed use, so we're working through that with the applicant right now. Additionally, they, the applicants just sold to us 4.98 acres as part of the REAP grant for acquisition into part of the green belt. So that's not part of the rezoning, but it is located right here. So we did want to take a minute to kind of publicly acknowledge that and thank them for that sale so we can continue to expand our green belt in that great amenity for the city. There will also be some additional parkland dedication with the project. So as I said, we have two applications, two LLCs that are involved. So with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, council? Eric, go ahead.
Why, why the request rezoning from the R1 to the PUD?
Sure.
What's the reason behind that?
So the R1 is the standard zoning that when things are annexed in the city, they come in at. So the PUD gives them a little more flexibility to do some varying lot sizes. It lets us get more of the, the green belt area. We can isolate the floodplain into outlawts a little easier than we can under the R1 designation, lets us get more... lets us get more of the trail components kind of brought into the site. And then some flexibility on the housing type. So this has a mix of 70 and 80-foot lot width minimums is what they're proposing, which is similar to what we did on the other side of the creek. So a lot of those will actually be bigger than that minimum, especially along West Gate, where we have kind of that Parkway standard that we've, we have going. So the PUD designation just affords them more flexibility to be able to bring in those design standards that we've been accustomed to in the area. Most of what's south of the creek has also gone with a PUD development.
Obviously, staff's supportive of that redesignation, then?
Yes, absolutely.
I think the follow-up point would be that they've made a pretty clear and compelling case for a PUD designation as opposed to
Yes.
Kind of a maybe not.
Yep, they have, and they've shown pretty good success on the south side there.
Yeah. Good.
So Amanda, that northwest parcel there that you're working with the applicant to figure out what that's going to be, do you have any sense on timing of that? Or we're not going to have residents living in, in these adjacent homes, and then we're going to switch it to multifamily later, and then they're going to get upset about?
At this point, what we're working towards
Can you preempt that?
Yep. That's what we're working on right now. So yes, either we will have some sort of concept that can be included in the development agreement that would lay out, maybe a, this is a two-phase development right now that they're showing. So there might be a third phase, a single family, some townhomes, maybe some multifamily. We do not anticipate that, that will by any means be all proposed to be multifamily.
We'll have that figured out before we start having a whole bunch of residents and then...
Yes, yep. So that'll be part of the zoning process. So the actual development would take place after, but the zoning, the development agreement would be established in place with those standards laid out. If they then wanted to make significant changes to that, they would go through the rezoning process like we've been experiencing.
Very good. Thank you.
Mike?
I see, or I think I see several basins or water, you know, ponds or such. How are we doing the stormwater out there? Is it us, the stormwaters coming into these ponds that we're managing like we did in another project, which we absolutely hated the idea of?
So, oh, sorry.
Or is it on them?
So at this point, we don't have the stormwater management plan in detail yet. Doug might come up to address this a little bit more in detail, but they are showing a mix of off-site and onsite detention. A lot of it incorporated into the Green Belt that their, their idea at this point would be that the city would take ownership of.
Always the developer's idea, it's a great idea.
But, but these will be great places for fishing.
We'll see.
So similar to what we have completed down in the south side, where we regionalized the stormwater, so we wanted to have absolute, did not want stormwater detention or stormwater management facilities in individual yards. Cannot have that. So that was kind of first step. Secondarily, then, if we're not going to put them in yards, we have to put them in common areas or some type of space that can be managed outside of the individual lot ownership, in this particular case. On the south side, as we work through the process with the developers, you know, again, from a staff level, we certainly have reservations of having a homeowners association or generally kind of a limited homeowners association be responsible for these types of facilities. Again, it just doesn't seem to be able to have homeowners manage stormwater facilities, just not their business. So in that case, we did figure out ways to leverage the stormwater assets to be part of the park or Green Belt system. So we do take on the burden of the responsibility in the future for these facilities, once they are fully built, fully established, and have had the appropriate remediation from the development process. So they will be turned over to the city, they will be managed, just as we will manage any other park asset. So in this case, on the north side, we're doing a similar situation where regionally, we'd have wet bottom ponds located throughout. Those would at some point become the ownership responsibility of the city. They are all integrated or adjacent to the Green Belt, so they will absolutely feel like they're part of the city's Green Belt park system. They will also have trail components through them, so again, they're going to very much feel like part of that natural open space environment. However, again, there will be some level of maintenance every facility it does, and we will fully expect that there'll be some level of maintenance over time in the management of these facilities.
And there's no way for a continued fee like a homeowners association, but that is directly, that neighborhoods, as they would have to take it on in the yards, developers would have to pick smaller lots or building lots, can there be a fee attached to those stormwaters in the future? That's my old holdup, because everybody else has done it, doing it, and suddenly, you know, I get the change and I appreciate it. I do like this, the ponds and the, you know, the public access piece, but it just seems like there should be an ongoing maintenance fee attached to those properties.
So I agree.
Doug, just for the quality of the video, would you mind sliding over toward the microphone? Thank you.
What I would say is, is there really two things going on with respect to that, not directly to your, to your desired action. One, all residents pay a stormwater utility fee monthly. In this particular case, obviously, we don't dedicate the resources to specific areas, but obviously, property owners are paying to have stormwater facilities managed. Secondarily, as you may recall, when Amanda put together Property Values Report, properties that are adjacent to those water spaces, those water bodies, not stormwater management facilities, because those are actually a negative to property value, but ponds, green spaces, green belts, things of that nature, have somewhere between a 3% and 15% premium to the land values. So when you're talking about a $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, $800,000 home, which is liable to be what's in this space, 3% to 15% premium per year in terms of what they're paying on property tax, will be a significant bump for the city.
To Michael's point, and I think as we put together our stormwater plan, we've got to think, we've got to think about this, I think, a little bit further. You know, my homeowners association exists today solely for detention purposes, to manage detention. And we pay dues every year, go over and above our taxes every year to, to manage that. But who else manages it? The two of you, with, with your help, right? And so we're, we're going from kind of one end of the spectrum now to the other end of the spectrum. But I think to Mike's point, I think, you know, we've got, we've got stormwater, and then we've got, you know, these situations that are still going to require management, which we weren't really managing before based on the old model. I don't know how we get there, we're not going to solve it tonight. I think that, I think that it has to be in our optic as we move forward with our planning. Just, again, we're not going to solve it, but I get it. Mike, anything else on that?
I'd move that we receive and file the rezoning positions for the northeast.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero.
Move the resolution setting the public hearing for February 13th at 6 o'clock for the northeast.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero.
Move to receive and file the rezoning positions for the northwest.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. Passes five to zero.
Move the resolution setting public hearing for February 13th at 6 o'clock for the northwest.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. And that item passes five to zero. Thank you, Amanda and Doug. Okay, we'll move to item number four, which is a consideration of Proposed Ordinance Number 1086, amending Section 2, Chapter 2 of Title 6 of the City Code Speed Regulations. And Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Quickly, this is just a changing of the ordinance to match the speed limits that were changed by the DOT on Hickman Road. Basically, everything west of 128th is going to move from 55 to 50, and the code is adjusted to reflect that change.
Thank you, Jeff. Counsel, questions? The desire is to move all three readings?
That is the desire of staff.
Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at due time needs part of this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1086.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. Passes five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1086 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. That item passes five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1086 is declared to have been enacted. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, item five is regarding the pay request, number one, for RDG Planning and Design Northwest Parks Planning Project, $6,552.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by John. Further discussion?
I'll be abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you, Susan. Jane, no further discussion. With the council, please vote. Okay, item six, resolution authorizing a local match for the pre-disaster mitigation grant program. Doug?
Thank you. What you have before you is a request for staff to submit for a grant, pre-disaster mitigation, flood mitigation project grant. As we have continued to work with a number of partners on additional flood mitigation solutions, options, ideas for that University Boulevard area, it was brought to our attention here relatively recently that the types of things that we're talking about, whether or not it's additional buyouts, or structural changes, or floodplain management changes, or other non-structural flood mitigation strategies that we're talking about, all of those ideas are eligible projects for, request for financial contribution to analyze or further study these types of efforts. So because we've got quite a bit of momentum going in terms of the visioning that'll occur for this space within the district plan, and also with the water resources plan that'll help us really leverage that district planning process with flood mitigation projects in at least the large-scale sense, we thought it would be most appropriate if we can get our handout for this grant, which brings money in the next federal fiscal year. If we can get our vision figured out, then we can use this money to then detail study those appropriate mitigation strategies to determine cost effectiveness, which in the world of FEMA means, is there more benefits than cost? And if there are, then those projects can be eligible for additional federal funding. So we're kind of trying to take advantage of a timing situation here where we think we can make a successful application because of the partnerships and relationships that we've created here. But this is a forward-thinking step in that the money would be available in about a year's time, hopefully towards the conclusion of our other work related to the district plan and the water resources plan. So it does come, in this particular case, with a requirement of 25% match from the city that can be in-kind as well as cash contributions. So again, I think with a lot of the work that we are doing, a lot of that should be eligible in-kind contributions. I don't think we'll have a lot of exposure, but it does give us an opportunity to get in for about $100,000 and some $1,000 of federal funds to help us more specifically detail solutions that are created from this additional planning effort. So again, we would appreciate the opportunity to submit, see where we go with the grant, and hopefully we're successful and be able to use it in about a year's time.
Thank you, Doug. Questions, counsel?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion, Matt?
Just one thing I would like to add to it, too, is we know we have property owners, particularly businesses in this area, that are studying their own opportunities, and we hope that this is also another opportunity for the city to come alongside those businesses and provide even additional, more data, more information, to make sure we're all making good decisions in that area, knowing that there might be some tough decisions down the road. But I think this is just showing how the city is at least willing with bringing other partners to the table like FEMA, to really dig in and do that evaluation and do what makes sense for everybody in that area. And I think this will be an important step to that. And we'll be sure to make our business partners down there, particularly on the south side of University Boulevard, aware of this and this additional step we're trying to take. And granted, we won't know for a little while, but when we do, we will be sure to communicate that.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Mike, if you have something?
I didn't mention it on my report, but this is, might be a better time. Thanks for the work down on University Boulevard, that place, what you've done down there and how quick you got it taken down, those buildings and, yeah, well, I think so.
Took some time to get there, but the actual...
Literally like overnight when I drove by, but those photo and the other places are just gone, and it's already graded, final grade, but it's, it looks great. And it happened in a hurry, and I think that's going to help this story.
There'll be a lot more action occurring here in the next couple of weeks. University Photo did come down this week, both buildings. There, the rest of the homes on 78th Street and the couple on 75th will be coming down here in the next week or two as well. So yes, that area is going to look tremendously different, certainly within the next 30 days.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Doug. Susan?
I just want to give real credit to staff for the relationships you've developed that have fostered this opportunity to be encouraged to seek this kind of funding. It's definitely something that we know as a city that we're needing to continue to ramp up our efforts to do. And some other cities like Iowa City have taken the step of increasing their, or tapping their emergency levy. So anything we can do to seek outside grant funding to avoid needs to do that kind of thing are to our benefit. So thank you very much.
You bet.
Other discussion on this item? It's been moved and seconded. Seeing now with the council, please vote. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Doug. Okay, we'll move to discussion items now. Our first one is Continuous Improvement Report from Community Development, and Jill has that tonight.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
I'm going to kick off 2020 with our process improvement, so you'll hear from us right away. We won't wait till the end of the year to do it. Ready to go. So the last couple of months, we've really been looking at ways to improve our development review process, really making that more streamlined for our applicants as well as staff. We felt there was some areas that we could definitely improve, get those numbers down a little bit, and get projects rolling a lot quicker for our applicants, and reduce just some of that downtime. So what we found were if we moved our planning and zoning meetings to a different, a different day, and actually reduced them to only one a month instead of two, it would, it makes a lot of sense. So we, we looked at some different scenarios, different days, what the, the past has been, and how that's kind of worked out, and what this could mean if we, if we move forward with it. So what we found is out of a possible 24 meetings, typically we only hold about half of those anyway. So reducing the number of meetings shouldn't be hugely impactful for our applicants. We only hold about half of them throughout the year anyway. year anyway. And then moving the day to the first Thursday of the month really helps us reduce that time quite a bit for the applicant. What we're looking at now is the way it usually works out is that our Planning and Zoning Commission meetings end up on the Tuesday right prior the same week to our council meetings on Thursdays. So the outcome of the planning and zoning meeting can't get onto the next council meeting two days later. So we're typically waiting at least a week, and then over the holiday time, it's much more than that, where everyone's just kind of sitting in limbo waiting for the next council meeting. So that's an extra item staff has on their plate, and then the applicant is just waiting. When we have, you know, many, many items that are ready to go, staff is comfortable with them, they just need approval. So that moves it a lot quicker along for the applicant as well. We ran this by our Planning and Zoning Board, and they're, they really like the idea. They're happy with moving, moving the day and then only having once a month. I think they also appreciate being able to plan out personal time a little better as well. Staff can do that also, especially if it's always on Thursdays. And then the first Thursday of the month, everyone knows it's only 12 days a year you got to plan around instead of 24. So that's a lot easier for our commission members as well to be able to make those meetings when there's only half as many. So what we looked at were reducing the number of days and then our average cut down quite a bit. Around the holidays, it was something like 70 or 80 days the applicant could be waiting in that approval time. Switching it to the previous Thursday, the first Thursday of the month before that first council meeting reduces the day, and it's consistent. It's 52 days every single month. If it's a pretty straightforward project, we could probably reduce that a little bit as well. If it's minor changes that need to go through the process, complete plans that staff is comfortable with, it could maybe even be shorter than that. So that's what we are proposing, and I do need to ask as well if that could be approved by council also, or if you have any questions.
Well, start with questions first, council.
I'd like Jill as my partner for continuous improvement on this council and work on maybe his half schedule.
I don't know that I could make as good of an argument.
Anything to add?
I think this is, you know, I appreciate the staff really looking at this and working with the commission. You know, we're canceling half of the meetings already anyway. Let's, you know, we're, as we talked about earlier at the beginning of the meeting and appreciating volunteers' time. I think this is another way to show our appreciation by, you know, not making them schedule multiple meetings that end up getting canceled anyway. I know we, you know, Board of Adjustment is kind of like that, too. If we don't have an application, the meeting gets canceled, and that's why that one's only once a month. And so I think that's appropriate to do the same with planning and zoning. And so, and also at the same time, we're benefiting the development community in terms of having more predictability and turnaround time and a shorter turnaround time. I think it's beneficial for everybody.
The request is to have council move it?
I think, I don't know if they need to do a formal vote. It's just your general support, since it is a boarding commission.
Right.
I think we would have to make an ordinance change, wouldn't we to, is that, we don't have it in the ordinance. So it's just more of just making sure you guys were comfortable, you all were comfortable with this.
Desire of the council.
That's why we put it where we put it on the agenda.
Again, seeing a lot of heads nodding up here.
Yes.
Thank you. It was all of staff.
Yes. Any other questions?
How does that impact when we have a work session?
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, so, oh, sorry, go ahead if you were going to answer it, but...
Yeah, one of my notes here I skipped over. So quarterly work sessions, obviously, four times a year for you. Again, if some of those meetings do get canceled, because a lot of times it's more than half of our meetings get canceled. So some of those could maybe not be held anyway. But we, we looked at alternative rooms and found that on Thursday nights, there is other rooms, especially we obviously know from here till forever when these meetings are going to be, since it's the same day. So the, the library room is, you know, usually available, or we can make sure that it's available for our meetings. Northwest Conference Room, there should be plenty of room also. So between those two rooms that are typically open, we figured that would be sufficient for our needs.
And to add to that, you know, typically, there's usually only one out of the four we actually hold in this chamber with this council. So I don't see too many conflicts. You know, for example, the one in February, since it's usually more of a budget discussion, we try to do it more informally in the conference room. Your August one is usually paired with your strategic planning. So that's usually in a different location. A lot of times, the May one gets canceled because of the DC trip. And so the November one, the CIP one, will be one where we, I'm pretty sure we can accommodate location schedules, because again, those are more informal. The council doesn't necessarily have to have those meetings in this formal chamber. So we'll make it work.
And no concern about staff support. That's not, it's mainly a space.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, Jill.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, both.
Got yours over with.
First meeting, too. Look at that, 2020.
Okay, the second discussion item is a presentation and discussion regarding the fiscal year 21 budget, Public Works Department and the Road Use Tax and Utility Funds. Matt?
Just want to make sure, if it's desire of the council, you just want to proceed through to the presentation, or do you want to take five minutes? Just wanted to ask before we jump in here.
How long?
Won't be as long as the general fund budget discussion at the next meeting.
Twenty minutes?
But...
We could, we can make it 20 minutes if you want us to.
Would it be okay with proceeding? Okay, let's proceed.
All right.
We're an hour fifteen minutes in. We're going to spill over, then we'll...
Okay, I'll start up here and then turn it over to Jeff and others. So this is the first workshop for the proposed, City Manager proposed FY 2021 budget. And this is specifically focused on the Public Works Department and the, and the major funds that fund the Public Works Department, which is the Road Use Tax Fund, the utility funds, and then a little bit of general fund that we'll get into here in a minute. Starting off, just kind of a quick overview, you've seen this slide before, provides a little bit of history on the organization of the Public Works Department and the staffing. We've had some staff changes here in the current year. We're, we're currently recruiting for our civil engineer position, about to get started on recruiting for the engineering inspection technician. This is, as we talked about at the CIP work session back in November, this is related to the increase, substantial increase in infrastructure reinvestment projects, particularly related to roads, but also underground utilities. And so this is now, instead of looking at using consultants and the fees that go along with that, is having in-house staff to be able to do that. So we're in the process of doing that and also modifying some office space, the public works facility to have offices for those folks as we hire them on, and we're actively recruiting there. And as Jeff will get into here in a minute, we do have a budget request in the coming budget here, and I know we've, he touched on this a little bit last year, related to an operations specialist position that would be focused specifically on right-of-way. And with that, I will let him jump in on that one and get out of the way.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. As we present the budget this year, I think one of the things we need to make sure we look at is long-term, to make sure that our short-term budget is focused on following what is important for our long-term growth. And some of the things that we have to look forward to, and some of the things going on are affecting us deeply right now. And we're continuing to grow, which is a very positive thing. As the Northwest Development Area comes on, we have more streets, more valves, more intakes, more cracks, more sewers, and although they're all brand new, it's more streets to plow, more valves to maintain, more hydrants to flush, more intakes to clean, more cracks to fill, and more sewers to clean and TV on an annual basis. In addition to that, we also, as we've talked about greatly, and Pete has been become an expert on the street maintenance and potholes, we have a problem, and it's going to be ongoing for a long time. We've done a lot in the short term to look at the long term, and that's with our increase in our budgeting and funding to address streets. That has become a big thing.
Jeff, real quick.
Yes.
If you don't mind, you know, one of the things we've talked about real quick is with an emphasis on roads right there. So, you know, if you could just give me kind of a quick summary overview right there and the differences of concrete with, with how, are we doing anything different now than we did maybe in the 90s when we got, we got a fracture, more concrete? Now, we're doing, as we look at the build-out, the Northwest neighborhoods, what are we doing now differently on the concrete for a more lasting basis than maybe some of the things we did with the 90s?
Well, we'll talk twofold. First, the aggregate that we used in the 90s is a thing of the past. We have passed that. It was a soft seam. It was a class-two aggregate. We moved on to a class-three shortly after that, in the late 90s. That problem kind of took away itself. But for whatever reason, there's still issues with concrete. And as you know, we did a study here in 2017. One of the first parts of that was to look at our own specifications. And we changed our specifications to move from what was a 30, 35-year street to a 50-year street. So we made some improvements to get long-term more life out of our streets and make them last a lot longer, I guess, is what you want to say. And hopefully, you know, we continue to move that direction. We'll continue to monitor that and look at that on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. So with that, we have a lot of street maintenance, and we're paying for that from that concrete that was poured in the 90s, the potholes, the panel replacements, intake box house, intakes themselves, and panel replacement. All that adds up to, at some point, needing more resources. I think we've talked about it long before I was here, that at some point, we're going to need more resources, and that time is coming. We're not asking for that staffing for the maintenance portion right now, but it probably brings us into the first item of the short term, and that is the right-of-way operations specialist. Right now, as you know, we have a lot of fiber permits going on. I put the details in the memo there. They talk about how much it's grown over the last few years. We have small wireless facilities coming in. That is something that's consuming a lot of our time. We have all the mid-end gas and electric, not only for new areas, but also for replacement that's going on. We have DOT right-of-way permits that we oversee, design locates. All that is taking up a lot of time of staff. With that, currently, our, our ability to monitor what's going on in the field is very limited. We're not following up on it. We're issuing the permits and then reacting as people call and say, hey, this is going on. And then we try to figure out who was where, who was there last. Sometimes we have two or three permits in the same area, and one company goes through and cleans it up, and the next one comes through and tears it up, and we're not sure whether the first one restored it or not. We, we need someone out there to be able to follow through on the permits, not only issue them, but also follow through on the maintenance to make sure the resident charts are getting restored. As, as we've looked at that, I've concluded the facts or the summary in there on what we're looking at. One of the items is, you know, how do we pay for this position? The thought is with permit fees, about 50% of that position can be paid for with, and as it continues to grow, more and more of that position would be paid for by the permits themselves. The other thing that we're going to look at for that position, it would also be able to help us in the winter to use for snow operations. You know, currently, we have nine trucks. I think the ultimate growth was projected at 10. I think we're going to stay with nine, but what we need more of is people to fill them up. In the winters, we have nine trucks and 18 specialists, nine per shift. When someone is sick, vacation, or out, you know, we, we go a truck down. If we can keep those nine trucks on the road, I think we can adequately provide the service, same high-quality service to the citizens. So I don't think that 10th truck is necessary, but we are going to need additional personnel. This specialist, by bringing them on now and helping us with our right-of-way needs, also helps us prolong the need for additional right, operations specialists for snow operations. So there is a dual benefit there to that position.
How many other cities have this right-of-way specialist in neighboring cities?
Waukees just hired one. They just came on with one. Urbandale, I believe, is looking at one. I don't know that they have them on board at this point, but it's, it's, everyone is scrambling to figure out how they're going to address this at this time. I can get you information, and I can do a survey to see how many of them are out there, and be glad to do that. You know, as we look at the budget, one of the big things is the ongoing training. You know, we have a, very fortunate to have a staff out there that's always looking for opportunities for improvement, looking for new ideas, looking for ways to make our services better and our operations more efficient. One of those ways is through the training. We expose them to new ideas and new technologies. You know, one of the examples last year, they wanted to build their mousetrap with one of their ideas. Before that, they came up with a roller for the bag aqua dams, and they're always looking for ideas out there. They see something and they emulate it, the clear lens that they saw at a conference and said, hey, we can build it cheaper, put it on the back of our trucks, and we'll be able to see out the back. Those are ideas that come from this training and opportunities. Training for the engineers to maintain their current PE and keep up what's going on in engineering. So we have invested in training, and we have some training in this budget. One of the other big items in here is going to be the equipment. As you see the equipment in there, we have three items that are being replaced, a boom truck, a dump truck, and a pickup. We also have three new items in there, three new requests. One is a new engineering tech.
Jump to the next slide, would you? There you go. Thanks.
Missed it. You got, sorry about that. Changed on my screen.
Jeff, you think you have enough money built in there for training? You guys do such a good job with training and innovation for your staff. Is that, you think, are you good with, with the figures that you requested?
Yes, I, I, very good. I, you know, several years ago, when I first came in here, I think we talked about training extensively, and we made a huge increase, I think, at that time, and was very thankful. You know, a firm believer that we have people on our staff that want to know more, and I think that most people are capable more, capable of more than they themselves believe. You give them the opportunity, the resources, they'll surprise themselves and make us proud. So I'm always looking for ideas and opportunities to do that. So yes, that is very good. Looking at the equipment, we need a pickup for the engineering tech. We're going to have them out there in the field. There is a request in there for additional pickup for operations. As we've changed things over the years, we've gone to our, over the last couple of years especially, more and more smaller crews, especially with potholes, a lot of two-man crews out there. We replaced some of our larger panel replacement crews with, by contracting that out, and those have been broken up into smaller crews. We're short on vehicles, and we have a request in there to provide that vehicle for the operations, help us with pulling air compressors, hot mix boxes, and other things along those lines. The one last item there is a pole camera. It was in there last year. Since that time, they've added a little bit of technology on, to it. As we look at it more and more, it's got a laser range finder on it. So now they can lower the pole down and the whole look up a pipe, and the laser range finder will be able to tell you how far it is to an obstruction or something that's up there. As we look at what it takes to actually bring out our TV truck and get into manholes to see up them, this is something that will save us not only time, but improve the safety by eliminating some maybe manhole entries when we don't need to. We can just look from the top. So that's some of the equipment that's been put in there. I do want to point out, though, one other thing, and that we've delayed several pieces of equipment. There's five pieces of equipment that we've reviewed and said, hey, even though it's scheduled for replacement, it's not necessary that we replace it this time. We can push it back. So we'll continue to look at that on annual basis. Yes?
And I appreciate that, Jeff, but can you give us a little more detail on the dump truck? That's...
Not a dump truck, it's pickup, pickup.
The dump truck?
The dump truck's a replacement. That's a replacement of our existing one.
No, I understand.
Okay, yep.
I mean, that's a 10-year cycle. Can you just give us a little detail on its condition and why you think it needs to be replaced now?
Well, dump trucks are one of our most critical items in the middle of the winter. We need to keep them up and keep them running. We have gone through several cycles. You know, we have some trucks, one of them, number 17, is not due for a couple of years, but we're getting some rust problems on the frame and don't know why. We have another unit, the next one scheduled, number 16, that's been, or no, take that back, it's not the next one, but it's one of the next ones. It's been a constant issue. Don't, don't know what's going on. We do get into those problems where we want to keep them current and keep them on the field, or keep them on the streets and out running. Could we go more years? Yeah, possibly, but you get into higher maintenance, higher annualized cost as you put more and more into them. The warranties are gone, so anything that does happen at that point is on us. So we, we do try to keep them on the street. We try to keep a reasonable cycle, not in something that we're trading away a brand-new truck, but we are trading away a truck that still has value, so that...
I was just going to ask that, do we have a trade-in value that we're anticipating for the existing?
I think last year was about 54, 55,000 that we got for the trade-in. And we, instead of trading it in, I think we actually, City of Perry, we bought it for that same price. So...
Jeff, remind me what your annual mileage is?
Mileage, I...
But it's a reasonable...
I, I would, I'd have to look, and I'd be glad to get you that information. I don't have it on the top.
But you're keeping it for 10 years, and if the, you know, the average cycle is 65,000 a year or so.
Well, mileage is probably down. I mean, I mean, you realize we're slow in the street. That's another thing that, you know, when you're plowing, it's a very hard, it's just not a truck over the road. When you have the plows down, the ice scrapers and the wings out, it's, it's very hard on the trucks and beats them up a lot. Our miles are low, but you look at our hours, I mean, the hours get up.
So you're looking at more than hours?
We look at both. Yeah, don't get me wrong. But we also look at the wear and tear and the, the use form being a plow truck is very hard on them.
Those would be good numbers to know and have, to be able to compare, you know, year over year, when we're doing a trade-in. You know, this particular truck has this many hours and this many miles on it, and, and, you know, the benchmark is this. You know what I mean? That would be nice to be able to have those kind of metrics.
We have that information. We can get it.
Jeff, what's your cost on that lift that you talked about in here?
The lift itself, I believe, was 12,000? I'd have to, very, but it's like $12,000, I believe, is what it was.
That's something we use to change oil in the police cars and really for fleet maintenance then?
Yes, that's correct. Right, currently, what we have is a lift that lifts on the tires themselves. And we use it for the dump trucks and the cars. But let's say we have a dump truck up, we're working on it, it's up in the air. Police car comes in, they like to get it in and out quick. Our guys end up laying on the floor, changing it the old-fashioned way on a jack, safety stance becomes, safety becomes an issue. Conditions of laying on the floor and stuff like that. I was surprised. I think we have two individuals that have a similar type lift in their own home garages that they use for their own personal stuff. It's where they kind of said, you know, I've got this at home, it'd kind of be nice to have something here to, to help us with this. This will also allow us to change tires because it actually picks up on the frame. So they can pick it up and change the tires where the lift we have now does not allow that. So that's basically what I have for Public Works as far as the items that are in there. Glad to move on.
So in terms of the overall, out of the mic there, overall road use tax fund that you, the summary that was included in your packet. What we're looking at is we've, we've seen some revenue increases over the past number of years. Part of that is due to our special census that we had in 2015, but we have another census coming here in 2020. So the road use fund is kind of unique in the sense of you have these revenue bumps that happen once every five years. And so basically, by the time you get towards the tail end of those, each of those five years, you'll have a situation where you may be eating a little bit of cash, but then you're getting your revenue bump that puts you back up for the next five years. So it's a little more bumpy than the average kind of stable revenue source. And you see that in the, the fund summary that was provided where you have, where we have some increasing costs that we've had related to the road maintenance and staffing in this current budget year and the proposed budget year. But then you see the revenue bump that's going to be coming in the 2021, 22 budget as a result of the special census. And then how that keeps us very positive, kind of hovering around that 50 to 56% in terms of cash balance, which is, gives us some comfort in terms of some cushion if we have cement issues or we have a string of bad winters where we have high salt costs. We've got some reserves there because the road, with the road use tax fund, you only have one revenue source and that's those, those road use taxes that come in. And so it's very critical to, that we project out in the long-term as we're looking at this. So from the revenue standpoint, very stable at this point in time. Expenditures, I just included some information on the screen there in terms of we've had some expenditure growth in the last four years. And a lot of that's related to roadway maintenance, both on the staffing side and on the material side. We do have the 200,000 per year contribution that adds to, that gets us with the three point, the $3 million target that we talked about in the CIP discussion. Road use fund is contributing to that as well. And then also you see some of those kind of longer-term equipment replacement costs that we've talked about. Looking at modifications, like Jeff talked about of not necessarily going to the 10th truck, but focus more on the staffing side. And I think with staying with the nine trucks, I would argue that that 10-year replacement cycle becomes even more important. Because when you have one of those trucks go down, that's, or multiple trucks, which we've had that happen in a winter and we're down to seven trucks, that, that can then start to really impact our service level, particularly depending on the type of storms. So that's why those dump trucks become very critical assets for their operation. But overall, the proposal is, is relatively status quo with the, in the future on the budget year, with the one addition that we've talked about in terms of the operation specialist for the right-of-way inspection program, with a portion of that being offset by now looking at the fee program. One thing the legal council reminded me of, when we talk about that right-of-way program, is one of the state law requirements, I know we've talked a lot about small wireless facilities, but part of the legal requirement is, is that we have to be consistent in our application of our right-of-way oversight across any permit request, whether it's small wireless facility, fiber, mid-American on an energy item or tel, other telecom. And so I think that's why you're seeing multiple cities now looking at having some dedicated positions related to this. Because the fiber and the telecom component and the 5G piece has become such a big thing now where we're getting these applications and having somebody who is consistently overseeing the program and being out in the street and helping to apply our policies consistently. But then also recognizing that we have to have, that there's fees that go along with that, but we also have some limitations in how much we can charge by state code related to those fees. But we're trying to find ways to, to bring that revenue back in where we can to offset some of these costs. And so with that, from a salary standpoint, at least getting some coverage, 50, half coverage from fees. And then the other, you know, time with the, the position also being able to serve snow removal in the wintertime. It seemed to make good sense to kind of get a two-for-one there a little bit in terms of maximizing capacity for the Public Works Department and kind of taking on this new right-of-way responsibility. That's going to be before, on us whether we like it or not.
Hey Matt, before you move on.
Sure.
Help me understand this, the offset. I mean, we're talking $30,000, but that's not $30,000 in new permit fees. We're just moving funds around, correct?
No, this would be, we would be reevaluating our fee structure and seeing what we can maximize out of it. And knowing that we have a lot of new permits coming and new requests coming.
30,000 in new fees?
Correct, new revenue. I don't know if you want to talk about that a little more in detail at all, but yeah, we're seeing this as, we're showing this as new revenue in our budget.
Basically on all the anticipated small wireless facilities that we currently don't have, that those will be coming in. In addition, taking a look at our fiber permits that are currently now $200 apiece and adjusting them to be equal to what our fiber permits are at $500 apiece and basing that on the number of requests we're currently getting. And also knowing that every one of these small wireless facilities at some point has to come back and ask for a fiber permit to connect them up. So that's where that $30,000 came from. And that is.
It's increasing substantially in terms of the requests.
I'm just going to offer this, this right-of-way thing is a mess. We have to get our arms around it.
And sooner the better, yes.
The sooner the better. I'm just, just saying, whatever, whatever education the council needs to understand the complexity of this problem, bring it, I would suggest.
It's, and it's only going to get worse. I mean, that's what we're facing, small wireless facilities, we're already starting, like I said, we're already starting to see the requests and there's just going to be more and more all the time. So it's.
But so are you comfortable with where the, where the money's coming from?
Okay. And so the, just lastly, we do have a one general fund component here and that is the split with street lighting expenses. We're maintaining that 50-50 split at this point, kind of seeing the road use tax fund is in good shape. So not necessarily needing to having to move those expenses out at this point. I think that'll be more important as we review the general fund going forward. So we wanted to maintain that split at this point in time. And then, as I mentioned earlier, having some, utilizing some of the cash reserves in the current year and the, and the budget year right before we see that bump from the census revenue as it's shown in the road use summary that you saw in your packet. But based on projections, looking very positive in the short and near, or the short and long-term for this fund. And that is what our proposal is on the road use tax fund. Any questions on this before we move on to the utilities?
Council?
I have a question on the right-of-way point. Is there any opportunity to share with another community?
I think there's always opportunities to do that. I think it's a question of if we have, if they're having the same kind of capacity constraints that we're having and they're looking at adding positions. I, I guess I don't want to speak for the other communities, but I'm guessing they're going to be just as busy with that one position as we will be. So whether sharing makes sense, it's something that we can definitely ask. But in terms of now knowing that multiple communities are asking for it, it's always a potential. I just don't know how likely it is if they're seeing that they need a full-time position as well and haven't approached other communities. I just don't know how realistic that would be, but it could be something we could ask.
It just seems that it's worth considering that maybe there isn't so much as to have every single community need a full-time position year-round. You know, may, there just could be some value in having that conversation.
Mm-hmm. We can definitely mention something. Any other questions on the road use fund? Not, I will turn it over to Joyce and Suzanne for the utility discussion.
Yeah, so the next component, the three utility funds. And as you know, we work with PFM every year and they help us with our cash flows to help us project out for the upcoming year and then on out to the future. So I'll open up and let Suzanne take it from there to start.
All right, so I'm looking, our update every year is to update for fiscal 19 for the actuals, to do, look at year-to-date fiscal 20 and then to put in the projected budget for fiscal 21. And then we come to you each year with what we're recommending for rate increases in the utility funds. Obviously, in the water fund, you are, you purchase your water and then you resell it to your customers. And this year, Des Moines Water Works gave you a 10% rate increase to the cost of your water. Historically, the City of Clive has never passed on the full Des Moines Water Works rate increase to the ratepayers, which I think is, is another thing that we're going to do this year. The 10% rate increase that you're paying, we're only asking for a 3% rate increase at the end of the day for the water for your customers. And I consider that a big win. Also, when you were looking at the capital projects that are coming in the water fund, there's going to be some significant increase in the investment for the water main replacement projects coming forward. So this 3% is really to pay for the cost of water and to make sure we're building the rates and charges to sort of support on a cash-funded basis a substantial increase in the, the water main replacements. And historically, roughly $400,000 a year, anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000 has been, been the investment for capital improvements in water. And that number's going to go to a peak year of $1.8 million. And it's all cash-funded. There is no debt in, in the water fund. It will all be funded with user rates and charges.
One thing to note too is that, that large issue that we had, that when we purchased capacity from Des Moines Water Works, will be paid off this year. So that helps, yeah, that's exciting. That will help us ramp up those capital projects. What is it?
What does that release to us?
So 1.1 million?
1.17 million dollars is your last payment.
And essentially, we're.
Transferring.
Transitioning that, we built the utility where that 1.1 million is basically moving to the capital side.
Yes.
Right in time for that regional water cash.
I'm living through one of these cycles. That's good news, thank you.
I know. I, I digress, but when I was, I remember when those bond funds came in, it was a big deal because we needed another digit in our, to get the bond proceeds in. I was like.
And our current contract for that purchased capacity is 2045.
It's the top of the town.
Yes, it is.
So that is exciting. And also then when you look at our Des Moines, look at our expenses in the water fund, 44% of our expense is what we pay to Des Moines Water Works, so.
Good, Susan, do you have a question?
I do. Regarding the 10% and the 3%, I don't know if we're talking about the same percentages there. So how much of the Des Moines Water Works increase is covered for us by doing a 3% increase to our customers?
Um, so, um, was this, I don't think. So the cost, I'm, I'm trying to compare the revenue. So let me grab my calculator, one second.
You're suggesting that 10% and 3% don't line, don't line up quite?
So it would be a 10% increase on 44% of our cost. Of the total. Not a little less than half. So we're actually absorbing.
Five million water purchased.
A little bit.
More than that.
A little bit, yeah. At the 3%, I'm doing the math and.
3% increase, they're doing 10%.
Yeah. But if it's about half of your cost, it would be raising, it'd be raising your cost 5% overall across your utility. We're asking for 3, so there's about 2% that we're absorbing. Am I doing that right, Suzanne, or am I?
Well, I'm just, I can't do math in my brain anymore. I have to use calculus, so I'm just running some numbers. So I'm comparing the increase in revenue to the increase in cost. And so basically, and that's where the percentages, I think, are deceiving, right? So we're increasing, the revenue's 145,000, the cost of water's going up 143,000, 144,000. So basically, the 3% is the 10%.
So I think that is important.
Yes, yeah.
To demonstrate that we're being conservative, but we're covering our costs.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't assume that when you see those percentages.
Right.
So I think we should maybe talk about the.
And that's where I think using percentages versus the dollars and cents is a little, it's, it can be confusing.
It's a good point.
I do too.
Yeah, so you have 145 and 144.
We can tell that story for sure. We'll make sure we frame it that way as we're talking about this utility in particular. We always make a presentation after you go through this process, explaining to folks the decisions the council has made and we will frame it that way.
Other than the cost of water, $1,000 more. That's holding the line, I'd say, on water.
One of the other things that we brought up for discussion last year was going back to this tiered irrigation rate. And back in, up till 2014, we had that tiered rate and then we went away from it. And I think as these regionalization conversations continue, we're going to need to, well, one aspect of it is we're going to be penalized for those peaks. So it's probably time that we start analyzing those numbers to see where the average number, where's that average number of users and anybody who irrigates above that 75 to 80% mark is going to pay more to help us get those peaks down. And so we gave PFM a lot of the, the data that they've been starting to throw some numbers at and analyze for us, so.
Yeah, so we're really just in, I would say, data collection mode right now to understand sort of the history. And one thing we did look at is when you went away from the tiered structure to the flat fees, did that trim usage? And the answer was yes. I don't remember off the top of my head, something like 20% decline in usage. So we have sort of historical testing that proved that by changing those rates, it does modify the, the behavior of your water users. And so knowing that water regionalization and the rate structure might be changing, the cost of that irrigation is going to be, I would say, exponentially greater to the cost, the rate player, the ratepayers in the City of Clive. So we're trying to study that to understand what makes sense and at what level do you start penalizing more and taking more of that back to try to modify the behavior.
So we're not.
Oh, go ahead.
We're not going to plan on anything for this year's, the upcoming budget, but just know that we're going to continue to work on that data and we'll be having future conversations regarding that.
Well, we'll be having those conversations as well. You know, they're, they're using this peak. Matt, you know how I feel about it. Fairly loosely. And, you know, I think there are those cities that just buy from Des Moines Water Works during their peak. And there are cities like us that buy everything from Des Moines Water Works whether we're peaking or not. And we believe that consideration needs to be given.
And if you're, I could add to that, Your Honor, I know we're having another meeting later this month to kind of see where we're at on the regionalization discussions. And it's, it's, it's kind of hard because at the same point, as a, as a business, which the water utility is a business, it's, we're in the business of selling water. But at the same point, there's this, you know, community element of water conservation and making sure people are irrigating, they're doing it, you know, in the most efficient way and not over-irrigating. Because that's not necessarily doing any benefits to their lawn. And so this is part of the, kind of the key data metric that we're trying to look at is if you have 80% of your users that are using 299 gallons or less on the irrigation meter, you know, can we bring some science to it too? Is that a good average for a yard? And then understanding, okay, if we want to make sure, we want to incentivize, because this should needs to be, I think, in a bigger discussion of an overall water conservation program of, for the city as a whole to think about. And this is just one element is irrigation. It's also education on what's over-irrigating look like, what does that mean in terms of a lawn? And then at the same point, using your, the irrigation rate structure to incentivize practices, right? And so this is kind of part of the science that we're looking into is what is that right mark? And we'll provide more data on that because we also know that there's regionalization discussions and we don't know where those are going yet. We know that trimming peaks are going to be important regardless. And so until we really fully understand what that regionalization model is going to look at, we're not ready to kind of jump on the irrigation side. Because we want to know what we're also dealing with there. You know, there's been talks of, you know, it was two and a half times you're peaking, you're of your normal usage. Is that going to be the threshold? Whereas you go above that, there's surcharges in a regional model. While there's been times in drought years where Clive is three times a peaker because we do have a lot of irrigation in our community. And so it will incentivize then if there, if there is a regional model that we're a part of and other communities are a part of, to try to get us down to that two and a half times. Well, let's all take that into calculation, but I don't want to, we don't want to jump. At least the staff would not recommend to jump to that yet until these regionalization discussions play out, which who knows where we're going to go in 2020, considering the last couple of months of the conversation. But at least the conversations are moving forward and, and Des Moines Water Works has now presented a modified proposal, which I know I have on my list to get back to you on. We're also kind of seeing how these next couple of regionalization meetings play out. But that do potentially provide some incentive for the City of Clive to consider a regional model. But it also is, what are the other players in the, in the metro going to do? Because that's. Because that affects that regionalization model where it's looking at all communities today. If not all communities are in, then it affects what it looks like for us. So there's still a lot to play out on that front.
Sure. Mike, you had a question?
Yeah. Maybe a misunderstanding, but I would like to look at that sooner than later. I would like to bring that back on. I think we tackle it now, and then it's incremental later, and it's not a huge surprise. Water, drinking water should be more of a commodity than irrigation water, and we should show that. And for everything we're doing with stormwater control and just the environmental side and water conservation, we need to lead on those things. So I'm sorry it went away in '14. I think it should be back sooner than waiting for the regional side because now we're reacting to a regional model when we know we're going to be, whatever we do is under the amount they're going to penalize it, right? It probably won't be the two and a half, three, whatever we're talking. We're closer now, and we're also showing that we do, though we have a lot of capacity, rather us selling the capacity in another form, we are a business, and that one is a business. And so let's treat it like that. There is a commodity on irrigation water, and there should be.
Well, he, because we do want to continue. But I think the other point to that is that we're not using all of our capacity.
That's irrelevant. We're just...
Well, it's very relevant to what we get credit for, I think, in the regional discussion. So we've got to, we want to be able to utilize that to our benefit.
Then we'd use less if we implemented this and have more
Yes, potentially.
Of a capacity to bargain with, right?
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. So anyway.
To be continued.
Need more study.
We'll continue talking about that. Then when you look forward at this slide, this is the, how we rank with the other metro cities regarding to our current rates, and we're staying, right now at the current base, we're right in the middle of the pack there, and continue to stay there when you look forward to what we're proposing with that 3% increase. We maintain the same ranking in there.
And I always make the comment in this slide that this is before any of the other communities make their rate increase adjustments. We work with a lot of the metros. There aren't a lot of zeros in water this year. Everybody else is getting the 10% Des Moines Water Works increase, so this is the change before that happens. The other thing that we look at is what does this 3% mean to your average ratepayer, average residential ratepayer? It's roughly $1.13 per month. So again, sometimes the dollar amounts and the true impact get lost in the percentages, but $3 for your average monthly bill for your residential user is going to be $1.18, sorry, $1.13 increase per month.
Yeah. So, and keep that in mind as we go through the other utilities as well, that these, we still, we don't have any idea where they're proposing, so we're just going on their current The sewer utility fund, do you want to start off with that one, Suzanne?
Sure. So obviously, for sewer, the WRA is the big driving factor for the sewer utility. This year, the city of Clive's flow, the core flow declined 3.28%. And the expansion portion of your allocations declined 2%, 2.11%. So again, there were, there were just four communities that saw a decrease in flow, West Des Moines, Urbandale Sanitary Sewer, Clive, and Altona. And so, you know, that's, that's good news. That ripples through the debt allocations, that ripples through the O&amp;M allocations. And so I think that there were some, I'm trying to think, Waki's fully online this year. I think that was something that still rippled through. I think they're the last one to have that in their three-year period. And then I think otherwise, there's a couple items, I would say, outstanding in the WRA that are to be determined. The biogas, obviously, will have a ripple effect in a positive way. And then Grimes has gone through the process and is in the process of getting approval to join the WRA. So that, and there are two communities that are going to be prepaying their surcharges this year, so that's going to be a cash influx. That means that some community, you're going to be getting credits on your bills, so that'll reduce your costs for the next fiscal year. Incania Norwalk have chosen to prepay the balance of their surcharges, and so that'll be a cash influx in the next
Waki has, too.
Waki is prepaying, okay.
They're also doing theirs as well.
They must have a great board member on that one.
So those are all like tailwinds that are going to help reduce the cost, yes.
Right, add to the biogas one, too. There was a meeting just earlier this week about that, is that operation is now coming online next month, and they are in the process of getting approved as, from the EPA, as a supplier of renewable natural gas. And they're looking at getting some short-term revenue in, so it would be just basically the current market rates, which are a little bit lower, and then at the same time negotiating a long, longer contract, probably over a 20-year period, to kind of lock in a higher rate over a long-term period. And as they go through those kind of agreements, getting a gas marketer, there's a whole lot of legal things that they're doing, attorneys that they're bringing in to figure this all out, and a gas marketer, that we should start to see maybe a little bit of revenue in the current fiscal year, and then some more of that short-term revenue in the next fiscal year, and then hopefully, within the next six to seven months, they have a long-term contract. And then it's a question of, well, it's going to be paying for itself, and then the debate is, and we'll eventually come to the policy committee of the WRA, is what is done with the excess? Where is it applied? Is it applied to the O&amp;M costs? Is it applied to the debt? There's still some conversations to be had that at minimum, it's going to pay for itself, and then what's that, what that additional increment above? So I think, I know we've talked about the biogas project quite a bit, but those revenues are now going to be starting to come to life here in the short term.
So what's the rationale for the decrease in W expenses, WRA expenses? I've never seen, I've only seen them increase.
They're increasing slower. I don't mean to mislead you. They're not decreasing, but there's a tailwind to slow. I would say the increase that we're spent, that we were predicting last year, I should say. And some of this isn't even in the cash flow yet. So we don't have the impact of the prepaid surcharges yet. That hasn't, that has to get modeled through the cash flows. We don't have the biogas revenue in there yet because those have to materialize before they go into the cash flow. So those aren't necessarily in the cash flows. I'm just saying that I think that's going to reduce the pressure on the rating, and that's why even with the increase in costs, and I can actually tell you what that is. We don't have the 21 budget yet for WRA, but we have anticipated. Actually, there is a decrease of $60,000 in WRA expenses in 21 anticipated based on expectations from last year, so that may actually improve.
So along those lines, then, because that was the question I had when I saw this slide in the packet, is why are we doing a rate increase then?
Well, so the, let's see, that's like...
Our O&amp;M expenses for WRA will be decreasing because of the flows, but they're still adding debt onto it.
Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry.
So the debt, the debt overall, WRA expenses are going up, but the O&amp;M costs, and I probably didn't word it right on the slide here, that it's, it's our O&amp;M expenses that are projected to decrease. So there's two big pots. There's the debt that is associated with us, and then the O&amp;M, which is a smaller number. The debt is a much bigger number. And so they're continuing to issue debt for new projects, our rehabilitation projects of the core system, and we have a responsibility to that. So that's still going to drive increases in our WRA costs. But what the slower, the slowing in the O&amp;M costs allow us to do is, like, for example, last year, we were projecting potentially a 4% rate increase for the sewer utility. Now, because of that slowing O&amp;M costs, we're actually proposing less, obviously, 3% increase versus the four last year. So it allows us to slow the growth in our, the overall expense of the utility. Is that...
Yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was looking at the O&amp;M line item. The total debt is going up $490,000. That's almost, that's
That's the increase.
550,000 in debt.
Yeah.
I did my time.
I was looking at the, I got excited when I saw a smaller number. That was just on O&amp;M, though. And that is a lot to do with the core flow going up 2% and some of the other things we talked about.
And when you look at our current rates, we're in the same ranking as last year. We did, on the commercial side, we did move up one step just because Grimes took a big jump, almost $10.
Continue.
And they're going to probably take another jump when you look, once they get online with the WRA, they will probably be seeing another jump. So that will probably, that slide will probably look different again next year.
That looks likely at this point, too, for them to join as a member.
Yeah.
Still a lot of details to work out, but likely.
Yeah, and they're in, they're in full preparation and prepare for it. And so we look at, again, what is the, what is the impact to the monthly average residential user? And again, it's $1.13. So for keeping it back in mind, that's $2.26 so far on the total utility bill. People, when they get their utility bill, don't think what's water and what's sewer. So so far, we're at 2.26, but yeah. Any other comments? I don't think so.
Whoops.
What'd I do?
Stormwater utility.
Stormwater.
Okay, as far as our revenues go on the stormwater utility fund, we have no new staffing requests for this year. The revenues have been stable, no major equipment purchases, and just substantial investment in our capital going forward. So we're proposing a 10% rate increase for the stormwater utility, and then a large focus of the capital projects next year will be this Water Resources Master Plan that they're just, their RFP has just been released for. So once we get that finalized and in place, then that will give us priorities of what, how we need to move forward with those projects, so.
Joyce, that 10% rate increase then will help to fund the Oxbows and some of the flood mitigation efforts then? That's the idea behind that?
And right now, when you look at our customer base, 94% of our stormwater utility customers are residential. So, and they pay one ERU per, per their account. Commercial is, is based more on the impervious surface, so they have multiple ERUs.
That's a key point as we talk, as we get into the Water Resources Plan, is the financial structure of the utility itself. I know we've had discussion in the past about the equity of the current rate structure, and as the Water Resources Plan evolves, one part of that scope of services is, depending on how the council wants to prioritize investments, is what's a financial plan that also meets that, those investments? And that could require a substantial review of the utility itself and the structure that it is today. The 550,000 per year is what's laid out in the CIP. Oxbow Stream Bank stabilization, it's also the stormwater components of a lot of our infrastructure replacement projects, whether that's, some of it could be hard infrastructure such as storm drains, but a lot of it, for example, like the Clark Street project, it's the incorporation of bioswales. It's the compliance with our own stormwater regulations that we require on private development, applying that also to as we make infrastructure investments in the utility is there to help fund that. It's not able to fund all of it. We're bringing resources from other areas, as we discussed back in November. Also, the flood buyout piece coming from the general fund, excess reserves, and so, but as we look at FEMA grant applications and where there's cost sharing, you know, the utility is also utilized as a potential funding source for cost share arrangements. So primarily, the driver in this fund right now is the capital investments that we're making.
When you look at the current rates where we're at now, we're at the top of the, top of the ladder there. I looked back at this slide from last year, and everybody's rates have increased over the past year, with the exception of Pleasant Hill. They still remain at $3 per ERU. So you're noticing a lot more activity in other metro communities as well as, as here.
And the new rates, 78 cents. Again, the percentage is that it equates to 78 cents a month for the residential ERU to charge one ERU per month. And so total for all combined utilities is $3.04 a month in their utility bills. But I would say this rate charge, so I would say indicates that Clive is leading the way in storm, stormwater improvements. And a lot of the communities that are listed there, that's going to look a lot different in the next year to five years. There's a lot of master planning for stormwater going on. There's a lot of discussions to the point where some communities won't even say a percent. It's a dollar amount that's increases. We're not using percents anymore because when the numbers are small, the percents are scary, right? The smaller the number, the bigger the percent. If you want to raise it a dollar and your rate's $2, that's 50% rate increase. So I say that, you know, I think that this is just indicative of Clive leading the way.
And I would add that what's not on this table is, because we don't typically use them as a comparison, is the city of Des Moines, and they're the only other community that's been as active as we are in flood buyouts. Obviously, they've been very active following the 2018 event, and their rate is at $13.44 per ERU. So they're about, not quite double. But yes, not always ideal to be at the top of the rate tier when it comes to utilities, but I think stormwater utility, but I think as the discussion around this council table has been for the last number of years, is those are priorities for this council, priorities for this community and the investments that we're making. The Water Resources Plan will further that discussion, and this is, this is the primary financial source of our stormwater operations is this utility.
We were the first one to do it.
Yeah, you and Des Moines are really moving the needle on stormwater.
Also, then he, Matt had mentioned that the other portion of the public works budget, there's a small portion of it that is funded through the general fund and supported by the property taxes. They support portions of the engineering, public works, admin, and then the traffic safety and the street lighting expenses. We talked about that LED changeout. So if you go back to, I kind of added to my analysis, but you go back to '15, and we were budgeting, fiscal year '15, and we were budgeting about $236,000, and we're now down to about $200,000 a year split between general and road use tax funds. So, and it kind of seems like we're, we still have more changeouts to go, and as we're adding lights, I think we're just going to kind of stay pretty stable. Right now, we're running, it looks like we'll be right at that 200,000 mark for the year. So we'll continue to look at that every year to, to make sure we're good on that 50/50 split and that, and that the road use tax fund support is, is reevaluated.
Joyce, what percent would you say we're done with that changeout from LED to the old sodium lights right there?
Jeff and I kind of had this conversation.
Mid-Am, it's done.
Yeah.
They're done with all of them.
Okay.
Now it's us going back for our city-owned lights. So these would be like, 86th Street's done.
86th Street's done, Hickman's done.
Yeah, Hickman's done. We got Boston, Berkshire.
We'll be down in 2025 at a current pace.
Yeah, wherever you got ornamental lights, we have to, and those are a little more complicated to retrofit, so we're kind of filling them in as we have time
Okay.
Away from other things. But there are a much smaller number of lights versus the mid-am lights are, what, probably 95% of the streetlights in the city, and where we probably own 5%. Hickman is probably the biggest corridor where we have city-owned lights with Urbandale, so those have already been changed out.
When I look through what we had paid through January this year, it kind of looks like we're tracking it just
Flat.
Pretty flat
Yeah.
From last year, so. Any other questions for us? Any of those areas?
Thank you, Suzanne and Joyce. So lastly, yeah, this is the last slide, just kind of summarizing, seeking council direction, questions, comments on the four items there, and then depending on your direction there, the next steps are to incorporate these into the overall, the road use and utility budgets, the overall budget, and pending your direction, then when the budget is brought forward for approval in March, we would also bring forward the first reading of the utility ordinance making the changes to the rates. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, comments from the council.
Discussion, council questions.
Looks good to me. This is a good, do we have to wait on the rate increase till March?
Usually we do that because they get implemented. So Joyce can remind me, it's, we, while it'll be three readings, so it's April, May, the tables are changed, applies to the June usage for July billing, if that makes sense to you. It's a three-month lag for our utility bills. Did I get that right?
Perfect example of government right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so does that give you, Susan?
I have one quick question, kind of back to the streetlight question. Does the proposal give us some room to potentially do some work on 142nd?
We actually, we actually are working on that, and that would not come from these funds. It'd actually come from our, we have a traffic safety capital fund that we fund in the CIP, and with those being traffic safety, pedestrian safety related, we're actually working currently, actually working with Mid-American to put a plan together, and actually talking with Waki about their lights on their side of 142nd to actually implement that project. And we're currently, engineering is currently working on that plan.
Including that from CIP.
Yeah. And I know Jim is working with Mid-American right now to get an agreement together for the design, because they would be ultimately the ones that would be installing the lights. So yeah, we are work, we are working on that to implement it and bring it back for you.
I just wanted to make sure we're prepared, because we've gone a couple of years either studying or, you know, not having the resources. So I'd like to feel like that is the intention.
Yeah, we're in the implementation stage. Pending of the direction that you all provided to us at the CIP work session in November, so we proceeded to the design stage now. So that'll be brought back to you for approval.
But design and paying for it, so would it go in, in the upcoming year?
I think that would be the goal.
It's in the, we include it.
For 2020, yep. It's in the CIP.
That's it, took away from the concrete on.
If the council had decided to move forward with it first.
I just thought we were further along before and have been surprised. So I wanted to be very specific about it this time, to make sure that's not something we did not specifically plan for.
Okay, Matt, you need more direction?
I have what I need.
Okay, good. What's next? Nothing on, nothing on here, I see, okay. We're going to move to reports then. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. Quickly, tonight, we have a little bit of weather forecast, so tomorrow, this could be one of the first events where we're out there doing more than just the spreading operations. If it is deemed appropriate by Jeff and the rest of the team, we'll give it a big push on all of our communications channels to remind people to get those vehicles out the streets and make sure people can get around the city efficiently. The other small item I have is, early, at the end of December, I worked very closely with our police department and a number of officers to, on a recruiting video. So we were out capturing images and set up a few staged shots of officers helping motorists. That team did a really great job. The highlight, I hear from our production team, was actually sitting down and doing the person-to-person interviews about why they choose to serve in Clive. What is it about law enforcement that appeals to them, but specifically, what is their experience serving in this community? What I've heard is, I wasn't in the room because I wanted to make sure everybody felt like they could speak candidly during those interviews, but I'm very excited to get that content back and to be able to show this group finished product. We expect still here in January that we will see the first cut, and I'll work with the police department and other colleagues to make sure we get down to a really great finished product that'll help us put together a wonderful recruiting tool for our law enforcement team.
Word of saying it, thank you. Good. Questions for Pete, counsel? Pete?
Only thing I have is, attended the legislative breakfast this morning with many of you. Thought it was a good, good discussion. Nothing really groundbreaking or terribly new, I don't think, but certainly you guys can report on that as well, but, but I thought it was a good, good conversation. That's all I got.
Chambers did a great job, but it was a nice event.
Yeah, it was.
Well done. Here.
Nothing new. Again, attended legislative breakfast this morning. Glad to see it was held in Clive, the special events building. Liked to see that Clive hosted that, but good interaction and good feedback.
I agree.
Susan?
I just mentioned that last Thursday, I attended the community conversation that the Jewish Federation hosted, and I think it's, it was encouraging people to be in tune with anti-Semitic acts that are happening. So it was appreciated to have some representation there. And then I sent out the notice about the meeting that the school is, or having, or group affiliated with the school, where Chief Venema will be speaking. And I'm pleased that we're involved in that and plan to attend.
Susan, Mike?
Just one of the significant, quite significant, Rush Trimble is the new Dart Chair, right? So that's big news.
We'll do a sidebar.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Michael. Anything else? Madam Counsel?
A couple items, reminder of the partnership dinner, and I didn't know you're all attending next Wednesday, Table 64. Yeah, just following up on Susan's comments in terms of the flyer shared earlier this week on the school. And we appreciated Dr. Remi's invitation to participate in that. And both having Chief Venema and then the West Des Moines Chief Scott as well as a part of that conversation. I also plan to be there as well to listen to that discussion. Also, in the coming week, later next week, we'll be narrowing down to the finalists for the Leisure Services Director position, anticipation of the interviews at the end of the month, on January 30th and 31st. And then lastly, just doing a quick DC trip update, I know as of right now, the mayor and Councilmember Klein are a yes to be going. I know Susan is out of town, and John, usually that doesn't work for you. And I know so it's, and Michael, I wasn't sure if you were going to be going for Metro, with Metro Waste, but just wanted to check in. I know I talked to Ted about it, Councilmember Weaver about it this morning.
I have, I'm First Vice President for the Des Moines Association of Realtors Board of Directors, and they have a DC trip the following week. So I may need, I'm not sure.
Stay out there.
Yeah, I know. Two straight weeks in DC.
Maybe you'll get in the room, we're building across the street.
Yeah, for, for once, yeah. So I'm not sure yet.
Okay, so that's, so we have one pending.
Are you on, Matt?
Well, and part of it is, Pete and I haven't talked about it yet in terms of how we're going to coordinate that. It'll either be both of us or one of us, so we'll be figuring that out.
Be well represented, but I think we have room. And that's important, I think.
And because of that, you'll see a change in the schedule. We had a work session planned for that first Thursday in May, like our quarterly work sessions. We'll be canceling that, because we won't have a quorum. Actually, most of you won't be here. Either you're in DC or you're somewhere else. So it's just a work session, because it's that first Thursday of the month, so we'll be changing, affecting a regular council meeting, just that work session, beginning in May.
And Matt, can you send out those work session dates, just so that I can make sure they're in my calendar?
I will resend them tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'll send them tomorrow on the weekly update. Long and short of it, with that one being canceled, it ends up just being, and the August one usually being tied to strategic planning, which I appreciate everybody's feedback on the proposed dates there, we're still narrowing down, we're getting close on that, is really just going to be that November work session for the CIP. And other than, sorry, I stand corrected, the first Thursday in February is usually the one we set aside for any budget follow-up. And then also, we'll have, as I mentioned in my memo, a lot of development-related items to discuss at that work session, a lot of it comprehensive, or zoning ordinance, the next chapter for the zoning ordinance and the general regulations. I know planning staff has a lot to discuss with the council on that to kind of provide direction as we go into the next phase of a chapter update.
I agree with the mayor. I would like, I mean, if you guys both could make it, I think that's important.
Yep.
City managers would be there.
It allows us to capture more from that trip with you there.
Agreed.
Yeah. Any, any questions for Matt?